It's seven o'clock.
There's my funny, it's the funny man that lives in my computer. Got to tell you though, it's helpful because a lot of meetings I participate in run over and more and more so. So there's that little reminder what time it is. And we have a full contingent of council, everyone in attendance. So we can start on time and we'll begin, I'll call to order this, what day is it? December 1st, how, what a good celebration, the new month. Meeting of the Wabashaw City Council will begin with our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance. And to the republic.
Ours is dance.
One nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty.
Justice for all.
I can see the flag. Yes, there. Our real flag. Thanks, everybody for being here. I don't believe we have any guest speakers tonight, is that right? Oh, but we have, we have Ed's cat, maybe, maybe Ed's kitty wants to say a few things, that's a privilege. Do we have any public comment? If you'd like to make public comment and you haven't done so before in our Zoom format, you just unmute yourself. I'll give you a chance to state your name and address for the record. And then please feel free to make your brief comments. It's not our custom as council to necessarily respond to those comments at this time, but we certainly like to hear them. I don't see anybody, let's see, I'm not clicking all the way through. I do see one guest, I'll just hang on and see if that person wants to make comment. Otherwise, it's the usual suspects and they will get a chance to talk. As a matter of the agenda, okay, hearing none. We can move to any changes or additions to the agenda, just so I don't forget. I think Jess had maybe suggested that we remove from the consent agenda, the license. License issues, yeah, item consent agenda, item eight, seven. If you took a look at that, it includes licenses which would be affecting some of our businesses that are closed related to COVID. And so Jess suggested we might want to take that out of the consent agenda so we can discuss it a little bit. And I support that, anybody else? Have any changes? How did we, I'm looking back, how did we handle the actual update? Yeah, we've got it as general business two, we'll be making an update related to the administrator position. I know sometimes that's been on the agenda and sometimes we need to just add it as an update, but it's right there under general business two, attend to anything further for changes or additions. Okay, hearing none. I was feeling very thankful over the holiday weekend and trying to feel grateful for the little things that are normal. And I have a healthy family and we had turkey and that was all wonderful. But honestly, this, this first part of this week, I was really reminded of some things that I probably haven't been as conscious of. And I wanted to say thank you for some things that have been ongoing. We all have fatigue around, you know, this new normal that we've had to adjust to. But Dean, thank you very much for all the effort you have made to post things to Wabashaw, helping Wabashaw, which is a Facebook group, if people aren't familiar. The city has also done a lot of good communication that eventually gets onto that page. I just really appreciate people keeping that current. It's, it's, you know, it's extra work to do this kind of communication. But when everybody's in their own little isolation booth, it's very, very important and very appreciated. I joined the food share, the Wabashaw food shelf is kind of rebranding themselves as the food share, both to represent the reality, which is that there's a, there's a, there's a clientele side to the food share, but there's also a lot of engagement on individuals and businesses and entities that make sure that the food share has what it needs to provide for its clientele. So the food chair has a recently really re-energized board of directors. And I think a lot of their energy, energy has come from the fact that they have a new and very effective space to serve people. And so that board is really great and they engaged me. I'm not really sure whether I have time to, to serve them adequately, but I certainly want to be there as a liaison to city council and city hall. They have shout, given a shout out to Lisa, who's been just very effective at, at sharing communications related to the need both for additional donations. We would typically be coming up on the holiday train. And if you haven't seen the city hall, now city, city halls announcement on Facebook about that, the holiday train is virtual this year, but we still would really like to see lots of donations from households and individuals and businesses. The Canadian Pacific Railway is still making their financial commitment to our food shelf, which is a really big deal, you know, to go without that in a year like this would really be terrible. So thanks to Lisa and thanks to Bev, I guess Bev Hall made it known that, that as far as a drop off location, the library certainly is a very good location for people who want to provide donations throughout the week. And then it was also made aware that a couple of high school kids, and now I know who it is, it's Isaac and Caleb Moore, have helped to, among other things, make sure those distributions get over the food shelf. So there's a lot of really pragmatic stuff that goes into a functioning food shelf and that I take for granted. We probably all do, but it's a lot of logistics, like, like, like a grocery store, there's just a lot of manual labor and a lot of staff needs, which of course is all met with volunteers. Because of the new space and because of the re-energize, you know, re-energize board, they made a call for, for volunteers and they have a much improved pool of volunteers from what they were dealing with prior. They had a really effective group of volunteers before, but many of them related to age and other risk factors have been very cautious about assisting with the food shelf. And so there's a whole new fresh crop of volunteers, which makes that organization much more resilient. So that's really wonderful. I also was refreshed today, even though I really didn't have the time to be on that meeting, to be a part of the Bike Walk Advocates Group, which is coordinated by the statewide health improvement partnership, program coordinator Tina Moen. And there was the old, the old game from the Greater Minnesota Futures Project. It was Craig was there, Tony was there, of course, I was there, Brian Freeze was there. And of course, the other members of the Bike Walk Advocates Group. And it was a little overwhelming, I think I, I'm hoping I see Tony nodding a little bit here. It's a little overwhelming in these times to be thinking about long-term planning related to trails and, you know, recreation. But the reality is this virus is not going to rule the day forever. And we, we absolutely do need to continue to work on those long-range plans. And so it's really good to have that conversation and sort of envision, you know, that some of the work that we have already done is good groundwork for what might be important to plans related to either and/or trail development and/or safer routes to schools, safer routes to schools. We know that there's been a lot articulated related to the lack of connectivity between our communities that share a school kind of out between the middle of, of, of our communities and between our residential population. So thanks for hanging in there. I know I almost didn't make time for that today. I certainly needed to get some other things done, but it's good to see that we're continuing. And I'm, I did miss a meeting today and that is the task force that advises the WK School Board with their meeting moves around, depending on when their next school board meeting is. And because of the food share board meeting, I couldn't attend. But I read the review, I read the notes that Stacy Schultz provided and, and I just want, I really appreciate everybody that's providing feedback there. Of course, it has, they have teacher and staff and para participation, of course, their administrators, public health, members of the school board. So just, there's just very tough decisions still to be made. And I think, you know, they're taking it one day at a time, one week at a time, recognizing that this is very, very stressful for families to deal with changes in learning models. It's academically challenging, it's socially challenging, it's emotionally challenging, it's difficult for families to balance. So that, that, that work for those school districts just does not end. And they're doing excellent work to try to make sure they're looking at, you know, after the best interests of everybody involved. Other announcements, we, we thought we might hear something in the week of Thanksgiving related to the US Army Corps of Engineers. We don't have a formal response from them yet. I would anticipate that would still come in the month of December. I may prompt them just to see, but they're usually pretty good about following up, letting us know where they're at. And I don't have any other really essential timely reminders. I just wanted to pause for a second and recognize there's just been, just a whole load of stuff continuing to go on. And of course, extra work related to COVID planning. So thanks, everybody, for all of that. And with that, any good news from anybody else? If, if anybody has any just general good news to share, please speak up and then I'll go to the committees for report. Okay, you can cover your good news in your report. I'm going to go through our grid here and start with Tim. Would you let us know what's up with planning?
Yeah, we met on November 10th. We had a public hearing about the solar garden ordinance. Just, you know, we did some modifications to that. No public comment was, was there or offered. And we approved that with the changes we recommended. Our December meeting will be canceled and I believe our next meeting will be January 12th.
Oh, John, I got you next in the grid. What can you share from the Port Authority?
The Port Authority met on the 17th of last month and just a couple of items, we, we reviewed the emergency loan program, just updates on it as well as taking time to participate and listen to the presentation from the NEC with respect to the bonding project, the downtown bonding project. So that went well. Just a couple of items to note. The next Port Authority meeting is going to be on the 16th, which is Wednesday, the third Wednesday of the month. And there's going to be a few topics and action items in that one. One specifically is the Army Corps Port Project that you had mentioned. So we'll be need to look at that closely. There's an opportunity for some, for some grant funding. It may be a stretch, but we need to consider fund, funding the application, just leave, see where we're at with it. So that's where, with that, nothing else.
Yeah, thanks. Just so everybody knows, Brian Malm, of course, is providing a lot of leadership as we move forward here. So he's been keeping us posted about a port development grant for which we think we're eligible, although there's a couple of boxes that need to be ticked to ensure that that's the case. But Boltman Bank would be very equipped to assist with the application, which is a December 23rd deadline. If they are so asked to do so.
And if I may add, this is, this is from the same pool of money that we got our last grant from. We recognize now that the estimate for the port development, the project itself is, is considerably more than that original grant award was. So what we'd be doing is looking to try to get that, those funds kind of beefed up. So yeah, we will need those funds before we can start the project on our side of it.
Yep, makes sense. And then Tony, I've got you next to John, streets or parks updates?
Yes, we did not have a street commission meeting nor a park board meeting. We are short by one person on the park board. Larry Woodstein, I think I pronounced his last name right. He is retiring off the park board. So we'll be looking for a new member there. I'd like to thank him for his nine years on that. And then, of course, we all know Jim Abbott lost his battle to cancer. He was on the street commission, so we will be looking for a replacement member for him as well. I guess the only other news, it's kind of small beans, but I did apply for a, a grant from AAA Insurance Company. It was a, just for small safety items. And I got a $600 award for a couple of new pedestrian signs go in the middle of the streets there in the summer and, and fall when school starts and stops. Other than that, that's about it.
Thank you, Tony, for that grant. You know, when we're looking at one and two and $3,000 items in our budget, $600 makes a difference. So I really appreciate that I had a note on my desk at work to try to bring that up. So thank you, that's, that's.
Jump in here for a second.
Go ahead, Dean.
Just so the public knows, they can go to the Wabashaw City's website and fill out an application for volunteering for the park board and street. Just so it's out there.
Thank you, yes. And we have, we also have another vacancy and I should make a thank you there too. Jim Knoll is going to be done with service on the HPC. I'm very sad about this. I don't think I would have had necessarily much of an opportunity to know Jim except for HPC. And I really enjoy him being a part of that group and I'll miss him. I hopefully I can catch him out on a walk or something because I don't know how else I'm going to run into him. So thank you to Jim for that service and we would be looking additionally for service to that commission, which is a daytime meeting. If that means anything to people, it's a 9:00 AM Mondays once a month. All right, anything else for us, Tony? Thanks for your monthly update, anything you want us to have particular note of?
Not many, nope.
Super, thank you. Okay, and then I have next, I have Brian, Utilities.
Hi. It, city council fell on a weird day, first of the month. We usually meet the day before city council. So unless I completely missed the meeting yesterday, we won't meet until next week.
I think Wendy would text you if you were, if you were MIA.
I hope so, or at least fill me in on what happened.
All right. And then Ed, do you have anything for us from ambulance? I don't know whether we've given you a chance to give us an update.
Our new ambulance came in this last week. Seems to be pretty dang nice. Crew seems to be enjoying it. We're having some, you know, we got about 400 miles on it. We're having some technical difficulties with it right now. It's going to go in and get some warranty done, work done on it. I think it's a sensor. Nothing too big. Our new cots are also in there. They're kind of a lifesaver, really, really nice to work with, as Tim would probably say the same thing. I just encourage the council to come in and take a peek at the new rig and say hello to the staff that's there and enjoy the, the time while you're at our station. Today, our commission meetings, all we have, we, I've been giving our monthly reports to the commission. We haven't been meeting currently. We're going to probably start this month a virtual meeting, if we can all come to a, a time that we can all meet. We are also looking for another member. So if we are down one member yet, having a hard time finding that one. So if anyone's interested, please look at the city website and fill out an application and come chat with us. That's all I have.
I might be out of date here, but maybe Wendy or Jess can chime in. Is that, is that application available electronically or do they have to fill it in in paper and then get it back to you?
For the best.
I'm pretty sure they have to get it to us in a paper copy. We can try and do a form fill. It is a, it is out on the website.
A paper form, so they would print it, fill it out, which is no big deal. The form is not, should not be, should not get in anyone's way. And if it's easier somehow to just send your bio to, you know, whoever is staffed to the commission, I fully accept that too. You know, we're not, we're not checking so much your credentials as, you know, wanting to know that we have a person who's really, really in service to the commission. And that speaks for itself for the most time, for the most part.
Did anyone, did anyone have any questions?
When would it be, is it okay just to pop by without notice? Or do you want to let us, do you want us to let you know if we were to stop by?
It's your public building, so swing in anytime you want.
Sounds good.
Unless we're on a call, it should be staffed from six to six.
All right, thanks. Aaron, do you want us to be updated related to anything fire department?
Nothing really new going on. We're not doing meetings and drills until further notice with everything. So we're kind of just, we zoomed our last meeting, we're going to zoom our meeting tomorrow night. Just kind of get some stuff out of the way. We got to do for gambling and, and investments and stuff. So we've been busy. We're running seven, eight times a week right now. And I was kind of hoping it would slow down and it, it hasn't slowed down. So we're up about 47% from last year right now. So we're kind of waiting for that leg to slow down a little bit, but it isn't coming. But always, everything else is going good.
Well, thank you, I thank everybody. How's your volunteerism? Are you, have you suffered at all or are you guys in good shape?
We're in good shape. We're actually, we're keeping together with the state, the state chiefs association and, and the men fires websites are keeping up. We have to post on there every couple of days. The COVID status of our department and our availability for mutual aid. And we've been able to, the last 30 days, stay COVID free and available for mutually aid if needed. So we're sitting in a pretty good spot right now.
Wow, fantastic. Well, thanks to everybody. I know that's, it's a lot of personal sacrifice that puts people in that good, that good position, but it's very appreciated. Excellent, all right. And then, am I missing anybody? I think that's it. Any other good news or announcements at this time? Okay, in lieu of an administrator's report, I wanted to give staff a chance to give us any updates they would like to share.
Just mentioned quick that we set the dates for our 2020 audit. And that'll be done by Abdul Iken Myers. The preliminary audit is going to be next Tuesday, December 8th. And then the actual audit field work will take place February 1st through 3rd. On the one change this year is that all audit activity will be done remotely.
Oh, okay, sure, of course. Weird. Does that mean extra work for you guys?
I guess we'll find out in a few weeks.
Okay, well, keep us posted. They have sometimes invited members of council to come through and I cannot remember if it's during that field time or the preliminary audit, but let me know if that's needed at all.
Sounds good.
All right, anything else from staff?
I did have one thing that I forgot to mention earlier. We did get approval through the reception center grant to pay for our yearly radio contract of maintenance. So that covers most of our radios between all the departments. Utilities, police, ambulance and fire. It's not a guaranteed payment every year, but this year we were successful, $4,700 and some dollars. So that was, that was good.
That's really good.
Other than that, we got probably 78 ash trees left and kind of winding that down. And then we'll look at going through the alleys and probably getting some stragglers that are out there. Ready for snow whenever that comes, hopefully never, for us. Although, other than that, just everyday normal activities.
Super. All right. Hearing no further staff comment, we can move to our consent agenda with item eight, seven removed. So we have an approval of our November 4th regular city council minutes as well as the November 12th special minutes, which is our budget workshop. We have a first reading for the zoning ordinance amendment that Tim mentioned out of planning. And that is with a first read for city council, that final adoption would be held at the January city council meeting. We have annual designation of polling locations, which we have a resolution provided to us. If you didn't note it, it sounded like the move of the Ward three location, the fire station was unanticipated success. So that's how that's written is Ward one and three and the fire station, Ward two in city hall, as it has been. We have the commission appointments and I'm very pleased to have these. John Pullman joining the HPC commission. Oh, we did take care of Jane last month, so ambulance is up one, still needing one more. But Jane Dick has joined as of November. We have St. Felix gambling license for a drawing held in their auditorium on March 6th. And that is it. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move. I'll second.
Great, we have a motion from Tim Walrath, we have a second from Brian Woodley, any further discussion? And we'll take a roll vote.
Red Meyer.
Yeah.
Meyer.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Stella.
Yes.
Falcon.
Yes.
Woodley.
Yes.
Durant.
Yes. All right. So no public hearing this evening. General business, we have truth and taxation. Jess, is that something you want to tee up for us? Or to Wendy? Sorry, they're looking at each other. They're looking in the opposite directions that they would normally be if you were in the room with them.
So because we're not finalizing, we're going to do the finalization of the budget on the 15th, I think that's right, I have a calendar in front of me. That will be the time that the truth and taxation hearing will be held. Which is set by ordinance, the resolution that you approved in September, I believe, with the continuation date for December 15th.
So everyone should have that on their calendar. And I forget, did we, did we set the time? Are we at our regular 7:00 PM?
Same time, same, same time, same place, 7:00 PM, yep.
Yeah, okay, so we'll see each other in two weeks. All right. And you don't need a, you don't need action on that, we already acted on it.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so very eager to get this news and also very thankful for everybody who participated. As we've been keeping you up to speed monthly, which even though we've had a separate, you know, several special meetings, we, those special meetings have been for particular purposes. And so the updates have sort of seemed far, few and far between, but we are on track with our original plan, which was authorized by council. We had our interviews for administrator positions convened on November 16th. We interviewed seven candidates. There was a, you know, a demonstration of, of, I think what we anticipated, which was though the seven candidates all, you know, met the qualifications and provided excellent resumes and, and, you know, cover letters that made it clear they were, you know, qualifying on paper for the position. We had definite, definitely, I would say a splitting of those who have the experience that our prior administrator had, which we would lead, you know, lead us to believe they would be effective in the role. And then we had really some great candidates who demonstrated real potential, but did not have the experience. And so we have arrived at a, at a final candidate. That individual does not have an, an actual employment agreement in their hands. So originally I'd hoped, you know, the timeline might click along so that we could actually have that, that employment agreement for council this evening. But I don't think there's any reason to put, put this decision into a pressure cooker. We need definitely to have this, this salary discussion in the period of negotiation. And this is all is, was advised by, by Flairian Hood in their memo that we've been using as sort of our, our checklist. You know, we have negotiated or made that, that candidate known that we, we find them to be the, the, the lead candidate. Followed up with an unemployment offer letter, which is not a binding agreement, but it gets the conversation started. If that person were to decline, of course, at that point, we need to regroup. That individual remained interested. And so we started discussing the salary component. And despite the timing of our budget workshop, which I thought was really well timed, because it was right during the period of this, you know, kind of back and forth with this individual, they were able to provide a lot more detail related to not, not only their salary history, but of course, very importantly, what their step and cost of living increases are anticipated to be for the coming year. The person is a city administrator and their council is not working toward no COLA increase. So they, they have no reason to believe they would not have that increase as a part of their compensation for 2021. So it's kind of back to where my intuition was, which is that in order to attract an administrator with the capabilities of the administrator that we enjoyed for seven years, you know, we find ourselves in the same salary range. And so this item summary includes a little piece that I just provided for some context. So the, as, as I've just stated, we got more information after that budget meeting. I think we were hoping to plug in, you know, maybe 95, 96. The salary component was more along the lines of 99. And then with additional, some additional increases in 2021, puts that person pretty much right where Chad was at and in that same step. So we need to have that discussion and we'll, I just, I just wanted to provide that context from a process standpoint about where we're at. And we can crunch the numbers when we, when we discuss the budget a little bit further. Does anybody have any questions? I know for those who've been involved, there's a lot of additional detail. And if you have, you know, sentiment you'd like to share, please feel free. Otherwise, I really also would welcome any questions anybody has.
So are we going to discuss this on the 15th?
That's right, yep, this is an update. So we'll give this person now here a week to actually work with. So the, the attorney Chelsea Bodine, who's at Flairian Hood, has welcomed this exchange of the, of the employment agreement that she facilitate that, that's typical. And that, that we would have a, an agreement that is signed by the candidate to present to council. So that really there's, at that point, it's been, it's been vetted by this candidate and then they're comfortable with everything. I think the piece that is helpful here is that we have a very well-functioning staff and we don't feel great. And our, our process, I think, has been efficient, thanks to everybody involved. So there's no pressure for this person to start on the 5th or 7th or 12th of January. That this process can accommodate our, our meeting schedule and what their date, their planned date, that they could realistically transition. I had to, I didn't revisit our notes, Tim. I can't remember if this particular candidate had a specified contract, you know, obligation related to their notice. But for the most part, everybody had about a month. So if this person were to notice, you know, if we made the decision on the 15th and they were able to make their notice, probably the next So if this person were to notice, you know, if we made the decision on the 15th and they were able to make their notice probably the next day, they would, you know, they could potentially be here mid, mid-January. And I, I don't even think that's, that's not a, Wendy, I think we've asked you over and over again, is that a concern? You know, if we, mid-January or late January, staff seems to be very comfortable that things are functioning as they should be. So we want to make sure we give the process the appropriate amount of time needed.
So one of the questions I asked, I think it was Jessica today. We meet on the 15th, can we go into a private session that is limit the people who attend to just council and staff?
No, there's no legal basis. Yeah, there's no legal basis for that. I did check with Chelsea, I just don't, you know, in my world and the private sector, all hiring is really, really private up until the point that the person's basically in, in there for the job. So in the, in this, in this position, you know, the, the actual candidates are, that is public information. If people request it, we don't have to make a public notice of it. I'm not inclined to do that. These people, you know, who are not going to be offered the position, they're, you know, this doesn't need to affect their life. We appreciate, very much appreciate their application. When this agreement is signed by both parties, the agreement itself, the full agreement is, is public information. So we'll have to.
It's too late then, isn't it? I mean, what we talked about back in the fall was that the, there was going to be a hiring panel who's going to do the interviewing and make a proposed selection. And then that was going to, at one time, we were going to have the whole council interview the candidates, the select the final three. But that, you know, that might not have worked. So, but right now, people on the council, the council members don't really know what else is going on. I had a conversation with you, so you filled me in some. I don't know if everybody in the council knows who the selected candidate is, who the other candidates were, the final seven that were interviewed. And it might be beneficial to go over the results of those interviews with the council. And I, we want to do that where you can speak freely. So that's why I'm saying.
Yep.
The council may not want to choose, you know, the council as a whole may not agree with what the panel selected. And you want to have a whole, you want to have support for that, what the panel selected.
Yep, you might remember Craig, that as we worked through that guidance document, we really, we were educated that there's really two paths. One is that the whole process is conducted by council. That was the recommendation, not, not some of council, but all of council. And each of those meetings, all of those interviews, et cetera, would need to have been public meetings and publicly noticed meetings. That wasn't, there wasn't enthusiasm within the personnel committee about that, in part just to create an interview process that is feasible and also very candid. And we had a couple candidates who provided an interview that made it seem like they've only done public interviews. And it was much harder to get to know those candidates. So that was the, that was the recommendation of, of the personnel committee. And the path number two, which is what our council selected, was to have an ad hoc committee that makes the recommendation. And so that's, that is where we're at. We can certainly talk about that, you know, I just, as a, as a courtesy, I am, I am, I am acknowledging that we interviewed a lot of candidates. You know, we didn't wait, we didn't drill it down to just three. We really, I think we really did our due diligence. And so, you know, we can publicly name those candidates. We don't have to name them, it's public information. But the candidate that we are naming is a city administrator. And so was the, sort of the second candidate that I think we would have felt very comfortable with as well. Those interview, those interviews rose up considerably above the other interviews, even though I would say they were all good interviews. You know, certainly some had different experience they would have brought to the table, not city administrator experience, more economic development experience. We felt we were looking for an administrator who has experience and could speak to that experience. We wanted them to be able to speak to disciplinary experience, to team building and professional development of their staff, to, you know, real difficult decision making. We asked a question about leadership challenges. And that's where some of the less experienced candidates, you know, while they demonstrate a great deal of potential, they just didn't have that experience to speak to. So the two candidates we were most enthused with were definitely showed their experience in city management really showed. This particular candidate is from Minnesota, expressed a lot of will and I think desire to network very effectively with other city administrators to make possible the kinds of things that we're trying to achieve in our community. They've had some housing initiative work that is actual, they're not just sort of hoping and working on it. It's, it's led to actual projects that are completed. And so that was very realistic. They're also coming from a community similar in size to Wabashaw. The candidate that was also excellent and demonstrated a lot of the same qualities, comes from a bigger city and has a salary commensurate with that experience in a much bigger city. And so they were not close to our budgeted amount. And that isn't a reason, I think we, we rose up behind this primary candidate with regard, with no regard to the budget. But it is also a fact that their salary history is more in keeping with our historic pay range for this individual. Anybody else want to?
Emily, did this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Did the interviewing panel, which is basically our personnel committee plus a couple extra individuals, correct? Is this a unanimous type of decision?
It was.
I agree with the candidate, she was on our list, I know ladder high up there. So I'm, I know the top three, I think, talking with Brian, were on our list after we got done with the phone interview. So I, I, I trust the panel is, did their due diligence and, you know, whatever they recommend, I'm, I'm good with that.
We scored everybody, and again, back to Craig's recollection of this desire to have a couple panels that, you know, that was my optimistic thinking that we could get all of council involved. And that was, we were cautioned against that by virtue of the desire and really the need to make sure that we're calibrated and the challenge of calibrating two groups. So with one group, and I thought, thank you Wendy for setting up very effectively, zoom after zoom after zoom after zoom. But we did, you know, one hour zooms on the hour and they went, they clicked along very well. And I think it was easy for us to calibrate. We scored points and then kind of ranked them individually. And if I recall, of how many hours, there were seven of us, and I think we, six of us had the same number one. And for the seventh person who didn't, that was their number two. And in discussion, we were all comfortable, very much comfortable with. And we did actually make a, we did have a, we called for action. And so we had a nomination, you know, we had a motion and a second and a vote on that candidate, just to have an official.
Who are the seven people on that?
Yep, Wendy, Emily Durant, Tony Johnson, Brian Woodley, Jeff, who stepped in last minute, thank you, because John was not able to. And in addition, from Police Commission, Jane Glander and Con Walters from the Port Authority. So yeah, it was an eight hour day of interviews. So that's really an update, but truly, if you have any questions, and I've encouraged this before, Wendy is right at the center of this process. And so without violating any open meeting laws, you can certainly touch base with Wendy related to this, you know, her staff update. But that's where we're at. So we, we, you know, just again, we chose instead of all public interviews, which would have been eight hours of public interviews, I don't know how we would even have that scheduled. We chose this path, which is, you know, perfectly legitimate and, and I think was effective. Our recommendations for this candidate, we're working through the final tweaks related to the offer, because there's some non-salary related, you know, negotiation as well. And Chelsea Bodine is assisting with that. We're right on time to deliver that yet this week, maybe even tomorrow, so that we will have, that person will have that in their hands to, to consider before they obviously sign it and notice their employer and then before we would act on it. And I admit, it's taken me quite a bit of, you know, growth to just go figure out what Chelsea has been advising. But you know, the, the document itself is very straightforward, but when you, when you do choose your path, then the process kind of unfolds related to that. Any other questions? I'm excited to introduce this person to all of council. I think that is the one real bummer is that, you know, we would, we would like to have, and I think, you know, it's considered a, a good thing to do, to have some kind of a meet and greet. And I still don't quite know how to do that. We can, I welcome any ideas about how we do that virtually in a, in a normal meeting environment, you know, the person would come and have maybe two hours before the meeting at which their employment agreement is being reviewed. And they would have the chance to, to shake hands with and chat with anybody who chooses to meet that person. That's a much harder thing to facilitate in this environment, but I know this person would be pleased to, to do it virtually if we invited it. I just can't, I've had, just the nuts and bolts of this actual process has kept me busy enough that I can't quite figure that one out yet. But if somebody has a suggestion, we've got a couple weeks here to, to implement something that would look like a meet and greet.
Have you got a number two and three lined up in case number one declines?
We do. Yep, they, they were ranked. I hope we won't be there. I think so far this back and forth is going well. I think we, it looks positive. Anything can change, but we haven't been given any indicators. The candidate's been really communicative with Wendy and I, which we invited, you know, to make sure that there's no confusion on any of these issues or that if they need the assistance with trying to figure out what relocation would look like, and they've been in touch, so. All right. Anybody else from that committee wants to share, please don't hesitate. Otherwise, we'll move on to our 2021 budget update. Now that, I bet Tyler wants to kick this off for us.
So this is an update on where we're at. For those that don't know, city council and department heads, I'm not via Zoom for budget workshop last Tuesday, November 24th. At the end of our discussion there, we showed a 2021 levy increase of 6.1%. On that file was attached to the meeting agenda for tonight. I'm still a couple things we're working through, including the new administrator salary, a cost of living adjustment, and some feedback from the chamber amongst a few other small items. Just a reminder that it's important to remember that due to the decertification of TIP 3, the city will benefit from a greater tax base, meaning about 3% of that increase will be absorbed by that growth and not be seen by the taxpayers. And so obviously, since we don't have these works out, we weren't able to have a resolution tonight. I'm looking to have one ready for sure on the 15th. So I'm continuing to work through that process there.
Would it be helpful for us to talk through that salary piece so that that's understood by everybody now that we were right, now we have a real understanding what that person's actually expected? Salary, salary expectations are if hired?
Yeah, that may be helpful. I know we have plugged the annual increase at the budget workshop, but I understand it's going to be more now. So if we have those numbers, I can put that into our file that we had.
Great.
Where you can kind of show the adjustment there.
If you need to share your screen, Tyler, go ahead.
All right, so here's our budget file that we left off with at the workshop last week.
So Tyler outlined, outlined this for us when we were talking about, you know, that whether the implications of the salary expectations would be, you know, a non-starter. And he went over the, what we arrived at last time we had the budget workshop. And maybe you'll do that for us, Tyler, just so everybody's really on the same page.
So the budget we had, had our administrative salary at about 88,000. And at our workshop, we put in 94,000 to a 6,000 increase. But as Mary stated earlier, we're looking closer to 100, 101,000, which would bring this to a $13,000 increase. Bring our levy increase to about 6.5% with the expected administrator salary.
Which leaves the impact to taxpayers at 3.5% or is it not quite that perfect a math?
It's about 3%, yeah.
About 3, okay.
3.5.
Any comment or question there? This is the step, this is the exact step at which Chad was compensated. And when the candidate brought back their salary requirements, they also notified us about additional healthcare costs that would be a part of our offer that they don't currently, they currently enjoy less health expense, even though our benefit set is very affordable. And so their salary, rather than having to adjust, you know, make changes to the healthcare and have inequity amongst employees, it allowed. But it's, I don't like to do that. I think it's, I like to see equity across healthcare and other benefits if at all possible. We opted to fold that in to the salary and, and, and meet that person right at the step where our administrator was paid. We're a little, we're probably a little under, but I think it's, I think it's amenable to the candidate.
So in order to have a resolution ready on the 15th, we either continue on the budget discussion tonight or if it's easier, we can do another workshop for next week or the following week to define why it's the 21 budget.
Tyler, I know that you sent an email about the chamber, which didn't really answer the question about, I know what they do with the money, but is the money 15,000 not enough, too much? But anyways, I think we cut 500 or 5,000 from that, or at least we propose it. So here's what I would propose. I would eliminate the CIP contribution just because we saved 227,000 from that in the next four years. Plus, we add another 25,000, I believe, Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, selling the ambulance. And then actually put back the 5,000 from the chamber, so give them the total of five, or 1500 or 15,000. And I think that gets us to 5.8%, I think, if I'm correct, or somewhere around there. I, I guess my proposal, we eliminate all that, get rid of the 5,000 there, and I think this gets to 5.7. So I think this helps not eliminate some of the services that the chamber does, although I think next year we need to figure out what actually they do with all this money we give them, as well as why isn't Kellogg contributing more to this? And why are we having the bulk of this? Otherwise, this helps to just basically keep all of our services that we have, such as some rack and some of the chamber activities. And also, since we have some savings with new ambulances, new COGS, new computers with the ambulances, we save money on that as well. So this would be a, what, a 2.7 increase to Pidaxpayers? This is kind of what I was thinking.
Tim, I'm all in on your idea. The, that ambulance purchase through CARES Act was, was just good fortune for us. And I really do support trying to fund these summer rack and chamber Main Street programs. Certainly now, we don't know what next summer will bring, what next year will bring. So if we can give them any kind of a boost up, that's going to help them help our downtown, our, our business district. So yeah, I, I like the idea.
And I follow on with it. That's kind of what I initially proposed, was the 50,000 decrease from CIP. And I also like that.
Well, while we're at it, I like to see Main Street put back at 6,000. As I said on this thing, we brought in, Main Street has brought in over $35,000 in three years. And in those three years, the city has put in 16,000. So you're getting 35,000 for 16,000. That's a pretty good trade. So we, we were able to save a little bit of money this year because the training was all canceled because of COVID. Next year, training is probably going to kick in again and probably later on in the year. So we're going to have more costs next year. And the 3,000 is going to be, isn't going to be able to make it on our budget. So I like to see Main Street put back to 6,000. It's, it's, you give the money back in the community, I think it's, it's a good buy.
You know I support that, Craig. And is it, is it right to assume that those trainings come at a cost because you're, you're required essentially to remain trained so that you can effectively steward the programs that they fund?
Yeah, that's right. There is, there is training that is required even of our volunteers. So we do go to training. There is at least one training that is nationwide and the director goes to that. The rest of us do local training within the state, but still, there's mileage and meals and everything involved with that training.
Yeah, I very much support that. And you know, the, as I recall, Main Street used to kind of be like a little bit of a line under, under, under the Heritage Preservation Commission. And while I don't like that, because it sort of loses its identity, it's, you know, there are actual real realized efficiencies there because the Main Street Director being serving to the HPCs can sometimes receive scholarships and satisfy their training requirements. So there's really, there's really good, effective overlapping leadership happening across those, you know, across entities. And I think it's, it's a little hard for people to see if they aren't participant, but it's really there. And our budget is, if I recall Wendy, we just haven't, we haven't used up our HPC budget for training. And we're always, always hot, you know, happy to see that those, those monies being effectively realized to benefit both the HPC and the Main realized to benefit both the HPC and the Main Street entity if possible.
Tyler, why don't you throw in, uh, $6 on Main Street, see what that comes out to be?
That's there. We're still under, we're still under six, which honestly I didn't think that would happen, so.
Okay. Yeah. I'm comfortable as long as we keep it, it's at 5.9 and, uh, that would bring us down to what, 2.9? With that 3%, uh, from the condos?
Um, yeah, so yeah, the effect on a taxpayer then gets us down to about, um, so yeah, so the effect on a taxpayer based on that, um, if they were to see a 2.9% increase is just under a dollar 70 per month, so. Relatively small increase to the taxpayer there.
You know, to, yeah, if we can follow up with Lori so that, uh, this request for, you know, I, I don't mind hearing that. I don't mind hearing what they do with the funds very explicitly any time of the year, you know? I don't like when we wait for all of this clarification to happen at the very end of the year. Um, you know, I, I, I will give the chamber a lot of credit, you know, as businesses uh, suffer through this as well as, as they recover, you know, the chamber does a tremendous amount of marketing. And, and so understanding their model and understanding their, you know, how, what their staffing needs are and what, what their members, how their members, which are benefit, you know, members are businesses, how they benefit from a functional chamber is, is good for us to have a working understanding of because I know that I'm bombarded with chamber information and that's how it should be, uh, you know, and they're, they're, um, effective in, in assisting with the marketing that a lot of small businesses don't have the time to do on their own. That's why they, that's why they participate in the chamber. So I'm, I'd like to see them supported as well.
Um, Emily, I agree with you on Main Street and Chamber. I mean, I think they need to come to a September meeting and explain why they need X amount of dollars that we're budgeting or preparing to. Um, because I'm not totally sure, you know, can we do it cheaper by covering things that, you know, maybe we don't need to print so many copies? We do much more on the Facebook or the social media side of it. I just think we need to get explained it a little bit better than we are getting it on the December or two weeks before we're going to set the budget. So that's my only comment on that.
Yeah, and we're, you know, if they're considering us a partner with regards to funding, um, you know, we need to be good partners who are actually aware of, of how they function so that we don't automatically nix them in a year and, and misunderstand the impact. Um, you know, I know I've asked Mary to present their, um, year review, which she's, she's able to do typically. She'd had a conflict with our budget workshop. Uh, but there's a brochure, you know, similar to what has been presented in the past that just shows that return on investment and, and it's always good to hear from those entities. They're doing tremendous amounts of work for the benefit of our community and our residents as well as our businesses. And so that is, uh, they're so busy doing it, they don't think to share it, but we can invite it more often. Anybody have any other ideas or, uh, comments related to these changes?
Yeah, I'm still, uh, I read the, uh, response from the Chamber of Commerce and does anybody realistically think that we need to spend $15,000 to spend to print 35,000 travel guides for businesses that will not be open? Does everybody personally actually believe that 2021 is going to be wide open and back to normal? There's going to be no vaccine out there. There's not going to, they're not going to open everything. It's not going to be opened up yet. So that's just totally wasted money. You know, I don't, I just don't get it why we're spending 30, $15,000 on travel guides that will not be used. We still have, we should have travel guides left over from this year that weren't used. So I mean, they don't need that money. I don't believe that for one penny. They, they're just, it's just a, they just sock the city every year $15,000.
I, I don't know about that. Have you asked her, are there leftover travel guides? Have you got any proof of that or what?
What did they do with them, Craig? With everything shut down? Would they still send them out? Does that even make any sense? They send travel guides out to close businesses?
Yeah, there's, you know, I don't agree. I think, uh, COVID is the way things are moving now. Uh, our, our season in here really doesn't open up until April or May. And so I think by then things are going to open up quite a bit. The country's raring to go. So I think that's going to happen. So I think we should be ready for it. This, this thing, this 15,000 we've given has been that same figure for every year I've been here. So then, you know, they haven't taken a whole lot of increases. That travel guide is a pretty good, it's actually a really well done. If you look at it, it lists all the businesses in, in the, in the area that choose to advertise in it, but right now, uh, you know, they, they're employing, uh, a director, they're employing a part-time person to help out. They, they rent a space on Main Street. They've got to have some money in order to function.
And you know, to their, to their credit also, Jeff, you know, they did function. I, I wasn't sure that they were going to have a working model, but their, their boutiques functioned this year. There were a lot of visitors in our community this year, so that the publication, I would guess, was in use, whether it had the same pass through the same number of hands as usual. I, I'm with you, I'm, I'm guessing not. But I don't think that, uh, you know, you can't not market just because business isn't good. If anything, they need to continue to market, you know? Lark Toys was open, a lot of our, uh, the Eagle Center is open, um, and they had to communicate new information. Um, and so there, you know, the, the online, uh, communication that the chamber did was really essential. I know there was a huge demand, as Dean will recall, when things shut down, to have really specific information. Uh, and it was clear that local residents don't recognize the role of a chamber sometimes. You know, about who's open, who's doing takeout, who's, what are their hours, who's got reduced hours, um, any specials? I mean, there was really, uh, there was a clear demand for that by, by residents to see that our businesses are supported. I, I never, aside from when I moved here, when I very much used the, the Chamber Travel Guide to acquaint myself with not just, not just tourism amenities, but basic services. Remember, our insurance agencies and our healthcare facilities, they advertise in that brochure as well. Um, so I used that for a good couple of years. I mean, it was, it was, that's kind of the, the welcome wagon guiding document, so it has a purpose for sure. Um, whether we should ask about, you know, how is it going? I'd like, I'd very much like to do that. I'd like to hear from our chamber, um, so that we can understand, you know, where, what, what has been the impact for their members, uh, in this year? What do they? They probably know a lot more than we do. Um, and then we're surmising because they're in communication with their members regularly. So I just would urge that we have that conversation with their board or, or Lori or both.
We definitely need to have that talk, um, because, you know, it's, it's not $15,000 worth of, this is my guess, it's not $15,000 worth of magazines. I'm guessing that website alone is probably 67, 6 to $7,000 a year to maintain. That's my guess, but it would be nice to know that number too.
This is good conversation and we, uh, we wanted a more transparent budget process and by virtue of COVID, you know, a lot of stuff, you know, a lot of assumptions I think are worth revisiting. Um, and we don't have to wait till our next September budget meeting to, to, to get clarity on these things. I think it's good to have the conversations throughout the year and we should, we should definitely hear from our chamber to give us a pulse of our business community as well as Main Street. They're, they're doing a lot of data collection to understand where they're, where, you know, these are membership organizations. They have to understand where their members are at or they don't, they don't serve a purpose, so.
They should probably be audited to see where this money actually goes is what the real thing is.
Anything further?
Uh, no, I guess thanks for the input on all the budgeting process here. Um, if there's no more discussion, I will, um, put all these numbers that we've um, recalculated into the budget file and, um, send that out for one more review here before the, before the meeting on the 15th then.
Thank you, and thanks for this particular worksheet tool. I think it's been really useful and effective. I can, you know, we can watch the numbers change and, and you've given us a format we can work with. It's been very helpful. I really appreciate that, Tyler. We have the, uh, special, uh, meeting date for end of year warrants also on the agenda. We have that scheduled for the 31st on nine, at 9:00 AM. I think we've had a New Year's meeting before. Any conflicts such that we would be concerned about a quorum? Okay, mark your calendars. And then we moved, um, licensing off the consent agenda. Jess, you want to take that as item general business 10-5? It won't let her unmute, I think. Wonder if I, no, there you go.
Um, so in looking over the licenses, a lot of these that are on there are businesses that are not available to the public currently. They're not a huge amount of money. Um, games of skill, everything is $25 a piece, up to $125 games of skill, owners licensing, for places of games of skill and the musical devices. There's no charge on the dance permit. Um, those are the businesses that are extremely affected by COVID and unopen to the public. So I'm, it's up for you guys to discuss, but in looking at it, we waive the liquor license fees. Garbage and cigarettes are still businesses that are open and able to make an income, so. Those are the two that, and those are rubbish removal is $125 license and cigarettes is 55 per year. And these licenses run from the first of January through the end of December.
Can we pause those ones that are being affected right now?
Tim, you're muted. Nope.
Can you not hear me? Okay, can we not, can we not pause those, uh, ones that are affected right now until like June 1st? I mean, what did we do in the past? Did we just wipe them all together last, this year?
They paid them as of last year for January all the way through. It's nice to keep them on schedule.
I guess what I was thinking is just, uh, pause them until June and then if they open, cut them in half or something like that. So you still maintain the, the December approval dates, I guess, is what I'm thinking.
Is the alternative to give them a year, give them the full year, waive the, like, waive it for the full year and they, they would be, we'd revisit it again in December of next year?
So are these municipal licenses or are these required by the state? And if they're required by the state, can we just issue the license without a fee? And if that's the case, I would recommend doing that and just let it go this year. It's not a lot of money.
I believe there's by the city.
Okay.
Your point is a good one though, John. Can we, 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 we should be talking about issuing the license and the adjustment is only to the fee.
For how little a fee even still, I mean, you're letting QuickTrip out of a cigarette license. I'm sure they're selling as many or more cigarettes as they did before.
That one would stay because they're in business. So it was the, it's the,
Oh, so we can pick and choose.
Yeah, yeah, games of skill. And is that the only one?
Skill, musical devices and owner's license to place games of skill.
Okay, so that's,
Which is a license for the company that places them on there.
Sure, jukeboxes and games.
Pool, darts.
I would certainly support that. Do we have a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we, uh, we still issue the permits for cigarettes and, and garbage pickup and suspend, uh, the fees for the others until June.
Until June, very good. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All right, we'll take a roll vote.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Falcon.
Yes.
Woodley.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Friedmeyer.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes. All right. We have our December donations. This happened to me last time. My agenda likes to freeze up. Is anyone able to read the donations, which is a pleasure to do? Maybe if I download the PDF instead of clicking to the live agenda.
I can do it.
That would be great. Thank you, Brian.
All right, so, uh, donations to the library, uh, $20 from Michael Hall in memory of Judy McNallyn. $25 from Dorothy Schultz in memory of Judy McNallyn. 25 from Julie and Paul Soggin in memory of Judy McNallyn. Uh, $20 from Gladys Detmer in memory of Judy McNallyn. $25 from Don and Harriet Klinger in memory of Don Peters. $100, Dallas and Joanne Franzen. And $250 from Edward and Lucy Passy. Um, the next set of donations are anonymous for the good of the Wabashia community, uh, $400 for local businesses, um, to the tune of $40 each. Uh, this is the list of businesses that will receive those funds. Los Portales, Stacy's Kitchen, Silver Star, Triangle Pub, Chocolate Escape, Fresh Walk, Riverboat Leans, uh, Turning Waters B&amp;B, Eagles Nest Coffee Shop and the Eagle Valley Cafe. So that's very much appreciated. And that concludes the list.
Wonderful. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution of the?
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Brian. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
And we can take a roll vote.
Falcon. Friedmeyer.
Yes.
Woodley.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Laura. Yes.
Duran.
Yes. And if we have no further announcements, we could also entertain a motion to adjourn. Anybody have anything else that's come up?
Um, I got something quick, maybe.
Absolutely.
Just an FYI here, um, there, we're kicking up snow off the ski hill last night and, um, making snow again through the night tonight. So hopefully we'll have a little bit of a base down on a couple of runs, but, uh, we're still looking at, um, opening day of the 19th, um, of this month, so we're hoping it's still a couple of weeks away, but, um, we're going to shoot for that. The weather don't, isn't permitting, isn't looking good for the next seven, eight days, but we're gonna hope that things turn, turn after that, but, uh, we're on schedule for the 19th so far. Just letting you know that.
Great. Well, you're wishing for snow and Tony's wishing we don't have any, so you'll have to see whose wishes are are granted by the old man winter.
Keep the snow on the hill, Darren.
We'll do, we'll do what we can do, yes.
There's no pneumatic tube, huh, for getting it off the streets onto the street, onto the ski hill?
Not yet.
All right, uh, would we have a motion to adjourn?
I still move.
Thanks. I missed who was first. I heard Jeff second.
Uh, Tim.
Tim, thank you. We have a motion from Tim and a second from, from Jeff. Uh, we'll take a roll vote.
Falcon.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
Yes.
Friedmeyer.
Yes.
Laura.
Yep.
Woodley.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes. Thanks, everybody. We really appreciate your time.
Thank you.